Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the July 2013, or July 13, 2016, meeting of the Ascension Planning Commission. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. All members, except Mr. Morrie Bishop, are present. At the meeting tonight, I'd ask everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And can we get the staff to introduce them?
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Larry Buqua, Attorney at Law for the Parish.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official, Ascension Parish.
Sean Chereau, Engineering Reviewing Agency.
Jerome Fournier, Director of Planning and Development.
And we'd like to welcome Mr. Fournier, who's our new Planning Director. I think this is your first meeting, so, welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving along then, to the Chairman's comments. Before we get to our business tonight, I'm very excited, actually, about the meeting that we're having tonight. Last month, we passed a, added to the agenda for this month, a discussion of a, the recommendation to the Parish Council of a master plan for transportation. And I think this is the first step in addressing some of the issues that we have with regard to growth. And there, those are issues that need to be addressed because we are a rapidly growing parish. People want to move here, businesses want to move here. It amazed me to see the Methanex Plant that opened in Geismar not too long ago, I think last year, the year before, actually moved from Chile. They picked up their whole operation from Chile and moved to Geismar because Ascension Parish is a happening place. And it's time for the parish government to get on board with that growth, manage it, plan for it, and adopt to it. If you look across our parish, it seems like every public entity has done that. If you look at our school system, for years, the school board has been buying property, building new elementary schools to manage the growth that they've experienced. There's even a vacant lot out on Parker Road, I think, where the new Prairieville High School is coming. Not that Prairie, there's going to be a Prairieville High School tomorrow, but certainly in the future, there will be a Prairieville High School, as the school board has embraced the growth and actually excelled and become one of our best public school systems in the state. We've seen that in law enforcement, where our Sheriff's Department, over the last 20-plus years, has gone from a rural parish Sheriff's Department to one of the most modern, advanced law enforcement departments in the state, if not the country. We've seen it in healthcare, where we've had St. Elizabeth come in and totally renovate healthcare in our parish. We've even seen it in the city government, where city planners have taken it upon themselves to embrace the growth that's come to their part of our parish, and plan for it, and welcome it, and excel during it. And it's time for parish government to do that. And one of the ways that we can do that is having a plan for transportation, because while most of, or while all the subdivisions that we've ever approved have, according to the engineering studies, not had a dramatic effect on traffic, there is a traffic problem that we have, and it's only going to get worse. And so, having a transportation master plan gives us basically a business plan over the next 25 to 30 years, which we can use, then, puts us in line for state money, for federal money, for users' fees, to upgrade our roads, to have a vision of what our parish needs to look like, and get to a point where we need to be improving our roads without any tax dollars. And although we're limited in what we can do on this commission, we can certainly discuss it and make a recommendation to the Parish Council. In fact, just a couple weeks ago, Bill Rue, who's our Director of Public Works, went before the Council and asked for a, request for a public bids on doing just that, a transportation master plan. And bids will be going out on that. And I have some information from Mr. Rue. He couldn't be here tonight because he was ailing, but we have some information, and we're going to have that discussion later on this evening, and it's going to be a very exciting discussion. But before we get to that, we have our general of business to take care of. So, moving on to the agenda, item number 7A is the approval or denial of the minutes of the June 8, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Can I get a motion on the minutes?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Chasson, second by Mr. Dumas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. Moving on then to item 8, is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I've got a question about one real quick, Matt.
Okay.
Number, letter A, the affidavit is not signed, at least not in the packet that was sent to us. Do y'all have an affidavit signed by the homeowner?
No, sir, we do not. Usually, when there's no mortgage, we don't require a signature.
Well, there's a mortgage by Pacific Union Financial.
Oh, there is a mortgage?
Yeah.
Oh, there is a mortgage, okay.
There's an affidavit, but it's not signed.
Okay, yes, sir.
With that, I think I'll move, I'd like to move that we take item 8A out and hear it.
All right, we have a motion to remove item 8A from the consent agenda. Do we have a second, Mr., second, or motion by Mr. Dumas, second by Mr. Chasson? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Item 8A, and what we'll do, Lance, is we'll, can we table this till next month?
Yes, sir.
See if we can get the-
Correct.
...
Yes, we can.
...
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion then, on the consent agenda, absent item 8A?
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Christie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. All right, item number 9A, public hearing or to approve or deny the following family partition, the Agnes C. Babin property lots 7A1, 7A2, and 7A3, Earls and Associates, Mr. Falgu.
James Falgu, representing the Mirandas on the following family partition, asking the commission for approval.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any staff comments on this?
Agnes Babin, yes. The owner is requesting a variance of the family partition based on the family partition shall only be considered if the African has been the owner of the property since January 1, 2015. The owner has owned, or, and has owned the property for a minimum of three years. The owner purchased the property in 2016. So, a variance would need to be requested, and staff is recommending to deny that variance, based on there's no hardship. No hardship's been, has been proved, I guess.
Mr. Falgu, do you want to address the hardship issue?
Well, the hardship is it's not running on a public road. In the three-year rule, the Mirandas bought this property with intention of putting their daughter on the property. She is here tonight and ready to build, as we speak, on the property. So, we're asking the variance for the three-year mark.
All right. Well, let's go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Is anybody signed up to speak on this piece of property? All right, no one has, no one has signed up to speak, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, do y'all have any questions or comments?
The, the three-year rule was in place to stop developers or individuals coming here and subdividing this and chopping them up and putting mobile homes on it and then turn around and sell them. This is the true intention of the family partition. The residents here, you can put stipulations on it if you like, that, you know, they have to build their house within one year, or they lose the lot, or it has to revert back to the original ownership, whatever you want. But this is the true intention of the family partition rule. The three-year will, like I said, the three-year rule was put in to stop, basically, the chop shop of, of what they were doing with lots. This is the true intention of the, of the family partition.
But you're creating two lots.
One for one kid and the other kid. The parents are ready to build right now, and one of the daughters is ready to build now. The other one, the child is not-
Which, which lots, the 7A1 and 7A3 are going to be for the children?
Yeah, the, the parents will be building on the 4.9 acre track, and the daughter's building on the, was it 7A3, right now. And since you're... Can't give one child something and not the other.
I hate to be stingy, but in light of the fact that we got, you know, you're asking for a variance, right, and they're supposed to build within one year, um, what do you, would you consider the one lot for the time being, and then come back and get the second lot later?
Yeah, would you consider just doing the one lot for your daughter now? Yeah. Yeah. And then wait the three years for the other one, that's fine. That's fine. Like I said, she's here in the back with the baby, ready to, ready to build.
What's the road that accesses this property?
It's off of Alligator Bayou. The, that existing 40-foot road servitude was, it was established, I think, in the 1940s, 1950s, way before I-10 came into play. And when I-10 came in, it basically separated the roads, and this is the only access for that, for all these tracks.
So, the 40-foot, it, it runs, um-
It goes, it goes past our lot. I think there's two more, there's a lot two, and then there's a lot one. That goes all the way to, was it Bayou Manchek?
Oh, I see.
What was the date of purchase of the property?
It was this year.
The, the staff denial is based only on the lack of a, of a purported hardship?
Yes, sir. And also, my concern is that, once this is granted, is a po, you know, there's a rule in place, and once that you vary from that, my issue is that it could be set some type of precedent, some sort. Because there's a rule of three years, that you have to own the property for three years. I understand it's a hardship, I mean, that it's a family partition, but the rule is in place for, that you have to own the property for three years. He purchased the property May of 2016.
And I, I mean, I'm sorry, I don't have the mic. I mean, I, I wholeheartedly agree, and I, I guess I'm going to have to rely on, on, on the Mirandas to explain why, why they would need to, to have this today and not wait. Maybe, maybe the daughter has a hardship that we're not aware of here.
Hello, thank y'all for hearing our case. No, we bought this property, and I just want to share it with my two children, and my daughter's ready to build. Now, we, we might be a year or two from building, and my son lives in Texas, so he may never come back home, but I got to give the two kids the same size. Like, my, my, my daughter lives in Prairieville, and they're ready to build their house. And so, the whole intent was for us to share our property with our two kids. We have two grandchildren, and we want to be close.
Any other questions or comments by the commissioners? Any other discussion by the commission?
We have a public hearing, yeah.
What's that?
We finished with the public hearing.
Yeah, well, we opened a public hearing and closed a public hearing, because there was no one that signed up to speak.
Okay, one more comment I'd like to say. We're going, we're going to make a small, small footprint on this property. We'll, we'd like to make minimum impact, so we want to live quietly in its neighborhood, just like everyone else does. And we just want to, uh, let everyone know that we're not going to just clear this property. We're just going to clear it enough for, to put our home sites.
Okay. Any, any questions for Mr. Miranda? Any other comments or discussion?
Did y'all know about this rule?
Right.
When y'all bought the property?
Yes.
That you wouldn't be able to subdivide it for three years?
Yes, we did. Uh, but I understood through discussions that it was really put in place for developers, and we, you know, you can see we're not developers. We're just going to put possibly three home sites on over six acres, so I don't, didn't see why that would apply to us. I know it's rules, and we will go by, abide by y'all's rules.
Well, that's my concern, is that, that, that is the reason, and so, we would have to make the exception for the developers as well. I don't, and we would have any justification if we approved this now, and then we denied a developer later on, because we obviously put the rule in place for that purpose, and if it's not being served, then it's, you know, what's the point in having the rule?
Let me ask the staff this question. If he decides to build in the area that's marked as 7A1, build a house now, would that prevent him from coming back in a couple years when he's ready to build another house and doing the family partition in?
Well, the issue with that is if the daughter's going to have a mortgage on the property, I'm sure. So, if she has a mortgage on the property, the mortgage isn't going to release the rest of the land for the house.
I'm going to leave it to you, Mr. Dumas. Is there, is there a, a way to work around this? I mean, what's the, what's the answer here?
So, this is the true element-
Well, that's why I asked the Mirandas to come up. I was hoping that maybe there was a, a rationale that the daughter had, other than simply personally, that when they want to live together, that maybe they're, they're in a location where they don't have adequate space, or something like that, that they need, they need to, they need to move, they need to make arrangements, and through the help of their father, they're going to be able to afford a house. If they, they had a hardship like that, that would-
That is possible.
Make sense.
And they live in a small house right now, and they have two small children. And, you know, we've saved, and we've, we'd like to give those kids a little-
The, the land could very well be the, the down payment that they would need to be able to build a house, so that, that, that could very well be the, you know, for them, being able to get into a more comfortable situation, where they have a babysitter and everything for their children, probably make more sense. And it is consistent with what a family partition is supposed to be. I mean, this is it. If this, if, if anything ever smelled like a real family partition, this is it.
Well, that's, and that's, I think that rule, didn't, we made that rule about the three-year ownership fairly recently, didn't we? Or that we recommended to the council and-
January 15, well, January 2015 was the year, so it was done prior to that.
And, and the idea was, and I think at that time, we were getting a lot of family partitions, where there was questions about whether it was development, or actually a family partition, where somebody wants to use their land as their legacy for their family. And that was the intent of that rule. And it is the rule, it is the law, but the intent, I think the intent here, from what we've seen, and of course, we have to take you at your word, Mr. Miranda, understanding you're not sworn in, so it's really not evidence that we can hold against you, but-
You can swear, man.
I don't know if we can, but, uh-
Well, you know, another rule that they put in place, too, was that this daughter gets this lot, and she can never get another lot in Ascension Parish. So, he can never subdivide another piece of property in Ascension Parish, and give her another. This is it. I mean, this is one and done, so.
Yeah, so one, one, one time or back, right.
Well, that's it.
No, I, I think the intent's there.
Yeah.
I think the intent is right. And it's one of those things where the law is written is really not, not meeting the, the, it's kind of covering too much. And that's the, that's the issue I have with that.
My, my concern, though, is what Lance said. If you do it, and then somebody comes up, developer comes along later and challenges, well, now, you approved that one with no basis. Now, you want to, you deny me at that point, or you're being arbitrary and capricious, because you, you, there was no hardship, or there, we violated the rule when we approved it.
I guess I'm a firm believer-
And I don't want to deny it either.
That's when you said developer, though, when I was dealing with a father trying to give his kids a piece of the problem.
Every application that comes with, to us, you know, we have to apply the code in the best way possible. And, and we have to, I think there's a certain amount of, of evidence and the credibility that evidence that we have to rely on. And it's up to us to make that judgment call. Are we comfortable with the evidence? Do we, do we find it credible and, 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 and reliable? And I, and I think that's where we are today. I mean, I think, like I said, I mean, to me, this thing, in all, all the family partitions I've seen, this is the one where I can, I can, I can stand back and say, there's no question, this is a real family partition, you know?
It certainly seems to.
And he's definitely willing to, you know, if, if you make the recommendation for approval, he would take out that one lot now, and just at a later date, try to come back for three years.
Okay.
That way, it would give his daughter just the one lot to build on.
I would feel more comfortable with that, because I think granting the variance for the hardship that the daughter really needs, a better place to be with the, with the children, that gives her more room, and, and has the assistance of her parents, makes sense. That's a legitimate hardship. But creating the other lot for a son that lives in Texas and may not come here today would-
That's fine.
-really not meet that criteria.
So, would the best option be to have them pull it, maybe put it on for next month, with just the one lot?
Or you can, you can approve it.
And at that point, introduce evidence of the hardship then?
You can, you can approve it, or if there's a motion, you can approve it to do the family partition into lots 7A1 and 7A2, and no lot 7A3.
Which one's the daughter's lot?
A3.
A3.
Okay, so we take out 7A1.
Yeah, so the, the motion that I would, I would express to you, or submit to you, would be, I would, I would-
Before you make your motion, I just want to be clear about, I think Mr. Dumas did cite evidence of a hardship, that being the, the daughter needing better living conditions, where, where her parents can help out.
Right.
And I think the daughter's back there with the baby in hand, nodding her head, yes. So, there's no, you know, we've looked at hardships before, and there's no real definition of a hardship in the code. It's basically what we determine a hardship to be. Is that right, Mr. Buqua?
That is correct.
Yeah. So, that's, that's what we're looking at, is whether or not that does amount to a hardship. And I would say, living conditions would be probably one of the most prevalent hardships I could think of, so.
So, anyway, so my, my, my motion that I would, you know, offer here is, I, I would move to, to approve the family partition for lots 7A2 and 7A3 only, and to approve the hardship on the basis that this would offer the, the daughter with her two young children, the assistance of her parents, and a better living condition for the children.
We have a motion. Do we have a second on that motion? Can the Chair second a motion? What do we do with no second?
It dies.
The motion dies, okay. Do we have an alternative motion, or a substitute motion?
I guess motion to deny. I mean, unless you want to pull it and come back next month, and have them present evidence of the hardship with just the one, and see if staff approves it.
Are you making a motion?
I would suggest, i- in light of, of that, may, may I make a suggestion to you?
Sure.
Why don't you ask for a 30-day delay, bring it back next month, and let's see if we can, between now and then, resolve that issue, help resolve that issue.
We'll ask for, sounds good.
All right. Do we have a motion for giving them a 30-day delay?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Second, a motion by Mr. Dumas, second by Mr. Chasson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? All right. We'll see y'all in 30 days.
Thank you.
All right, item 9B is the Elvira, Elvira Babin Caluet property, tracks B1, B2, B3, and B4. And that is, Mr. Falgu.
Yes, representing the Babin family, on the following family partition, we're actually settling the estate of the property. Four kids are getting the, each individual lot, except for B4. The, the sibling was deceased, so her kids will be inheriting that property.
All right, staff comments?
All comments have been addressed and recommend approval.
We'll open a public hearing. Has anybody signed up to speak on this issue? No one has signed up to speak. It will close the, the public hearing. Any comments, commission, or questions from the commissioners? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second?
Second, sir.
By Mr. Foster, all in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. The family partition is approved. Item 9C, the estate of Luella Dagel, lots Z2A, Z2A2, and Z2A3.
Representing Mr. Mark Coste, on the following family partition, asking the commission for approval.
Just want to make sure we're on the right one.
Yep.
This is the Luella Dagel property? I have down, DJ Quittmaw.
Yeah.
You're here for-
Helping him out tonight.
Okay. All right, staff?
All comments need to be addressed, approval contingent upon that, and that I put George Brignac Road signing, but it should be Alcee's Dagel needs to sign. All the owners of Alcee's Dagel needs to sign the plaque. As existing servitude of passage.
They will.
All right, we'll open a public hearing on this. Has anyone signed up to speak on this? All right.
Ronald Dagel.
Mr. Dagel, please come up. Just for all of you that, that want to speak on a particular issue, you have to sign in to speak, and you get three minutes. We'll give you, obviously, your say, but we can't just let you go on all night long, so we try and adhere to the three-minute time limit. So, Mr. Dagel, you're on, on the clock.
Okay. I'm Ronald Dagel. I'm the parent, one of the owners. And what we're trying to do is set, settle the estate as per drawn on this map. And right now, I have one of my sons that is forming it. We have cattle and goats, goats on it. And we're trying to get everything settled out to, to make our next move. Is, he's going to continue to farm the rest of the estate and possibly purchase it down the road, the remaining estate. Any questions?
I just have a question. There, there's a, for lack of a better term, a land scrap between, between the rear of lot Z2B and track A. What's that little rectangle for?
I'm trying to figure out where you're at. Hold on a second.
What lot is that?
What lot is that now?
Uh, let's see.
That little strip that goes in the back?
Yeah, the, the west side of track A.
That, if you look at the house up in the front, all that was one big lot at one time, and they're trying to sell, they're going to sell the house off by itself. It's going to stay in the state's name. So, the son is, is taking up all that property to the rear.
That, that small, narrow track, when, when the lot Z2B and Z1 was surveyed, that was left as a servitude by the surveyor, a 15-foot servitude. That's what we were told. When he surveyed it out, it was a 15-foot servitude.
But there's no servitude shown on the map.
No, it was a, it's a 15-foot wide strip of land, connecting the house to the back.
Connecting the lot in the front to the back?
Yeah. That was all, if you look at the length, the house up in the front included the house up there, the 15-foot strip, and all the, was it 20 acres in the rear. All that was all one piece, to connect them together.
So, that strip is going to belong to lot Z2A1?
That's correct. Which the son on that, the Brett Dagel, actually lives in the Z2B. We were going to connect it, but he had the, the mortgage on his property, so it couldn't be connected.
Couldn't, couldn't alter the boundary.
Not in the mortgage.
Without the bank blessing.
Bank would not let him.
Down the road, the intent, the intent of all this, track Z2A1, the 14.6 acres is going to be one piece. It's going to be his. He's going to purchase that, that property.
So, this will all end up just back to one parcel of land?
Eventually.
Eventually, yes.
So, this is just to, to resolve an estate?
Right, right. That's what we're looking to do now. This is one of the steps that we have to do, from what I was told.
Anybody else signed up to speak on this? That's it? Okay. Any other comments or questions by the commissioners? Any discussion? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
A motion by Mr. Chasson, second. Second by Mr. Christie. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, before you vote-
Yes.
Can we have the motion include all the contingencies that the staff recommended up there?
Does your-
Yes, the motion to approve, subject to all of the staff review comments being addressed.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what? Say it again?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve, subject to all of the staff review comments being resolved. Is that good enough, or?
Motion by Mr. Chasson, second by Mr. Christie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Item number 9D is the Mark and Tammy Acosta properties, lots 1A1 and 1A2. Mr. Falgu, you're standing in for Quittmaw?
Yes, sir. Representing Mr. Acosta, on the following family partition, asking the commission for approval.
Staff?
Staff recommends approval, contingent upon all existing users of Wilford Acosta Road, signing the plaque.
We'll open a public hearing on this. Has anybody signed up to speak? No one has signed to speak, so we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, questions, discussion?
Subject to approve, approve, recommend approval, subject to meeting all conditions.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Dumas, a second by Mr. Foster. All in favor? All opposed? None. Motion passes. The family partition is granted. Finally, our, item 9E, the family partition of Douglas Reams property, lots C2A through C2D and C3F1. McLenn Taylor, Inc. Yes, ma'am?
Ellen Jackson with McLenn Taylor Incorporated, asking for your approval.
Staff?
Staff recommends approval, contingent upon all existing users of Lillian Lane, signing the plaque.
We'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Has anyone signed up to speak on this issue? We'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions? We'll close the public hearing, comments, questions, discussions by the commission? Or motions?
I make the motion that we approve contingent upon staff's recommendations.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Dumas, all in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition, hearing none, motion passes, the family partition is granted, thank you very much. All right, item number ten is a public hearing to approve or deny the following preliminary plats. Ten A is Grand Oaks, uh, subdivision, quality engineering and surveying. So Mr. Derek Murphy is here, is there?
Good afternoon, my name is Derek Murphy at Quality Engineering and Surveying, representing America Homeland, uh, asking tonight, uh, for approval on the preliminary plat of Grand Oak Subdivision off of Corner View Road. This is a plat that was, uh, previously approved in January of this year, um, with fifty-six lots. As part of this, as you know, with the net developable area of a subdivision, uh, we were only allowed, you know, we had to take out servitudes and, and so forth, which allowed us to have fifty-six lots. Once we got into it, looked into it, took it, took it a little further, we saw it, putting walking trails and putting some additional amenities in there, we could increase that net developable area and get up to sixty-six lots, and that's what we're here tonight to ask you for, is an addition of ten lots on this piece of property, it is already approved tonight for fifty-six. Um, as you've seen originally, they had some comments that was going back and forth with the ERA, I think we've actually addressed, you'll see on the, on the revised preliminary plat that you have, we've addressed all the plat comments. There were some of those that were originally, we thought felt that were supposed to be, mainly in the drainage study wasn't normal on the plat, we added those on the plat, uh, with Mr. Jerome. I think there is a couple outstanding drainage comments, one being about, uh, um, the, to show that the fill in the lots will not increase the flow or increase the water surface in Smith Bayou. Right now, at this point, we only have a lot of our information, we're going to do this a, as part of the construction plans. Uh, we answered about mitigation for a hundred year storm, our, our answer was correct, saying that we basically got to mitigate per ordinance, uh, as far as hydraulics on Smith Bayou, uh, for storms of the ten year and twenty-five year, uh, we want to do that once we have our actual topo, uh, look at the field that we're actually going to put on the lots, we're not going to fill the entire lot up, and that's some of the issue that the ERA had with that comment. Uh, we, we not going to go all the way up to the bank of, of the bayou, so, we don't know that exact design, so that'd be something that we definitely want to address during the construction phase of the project, and that's where we feel that it needs to be addressed. Uh, other than that, I think everything is pretty much answered, and we're here tonight asking for your approval, and again, this is for an additional ten lots, uh, as this subdivision is approved right now for fifty-six.
All right, can we get, uh, comments from the staff?
Yes, staff, um, proposed plat meets all guidelines for a major subdivision, and staff recommends approval, and I'll let Sean, if he has anything to add to this.
We, uh, just as Mr. Murphy stated, they have, um, addressed it, our comments, um, um, I agree with him at this time, one of our comments was about the conveyance or the movement of water of the bayou past lots nine through twenty-six. Um, I'm confident that, once they have in the field, survey and topo, and a final design, we'll be able to complete that, um, that review. So, um, we are comfortable with the, the traffic, and also, like I said, the drainage, um, items at this point in the design stage of the development.
We'll open a public hearing on this issue, has anybody signed up to speak on this?
Jeff Pettit.
Mr. Pettit, please come forward.
I've already spoken, I'm sorry, my name is Jeff Pettit, I live right across the street from this, I have a little bit of, uh, history with it. I already spoke with, uh, Derek, and Derek, Derek, could we show your map, if you wouldn't mind? And he is going to come out and look at it, and I'm going to walk the area with him, which I really appreciate. Get this map here? Yeah. I don't know how to turn this on.
It's on.
This is New River, right here, it makes a horseshoe, I live on Family Road, which is right here. There's three homes on the road, I'm in the middle. My property runs between Family Road and Double M Road. The back of my property hits Double M, my driveway is on Family. Bayou Francois, Smith Bayou, uh, drain, this whole piece of property from this dashed line, it all comes across. It comes across my property, it crosses Double M, Easy Street, and Clay Pit Road, and goes into Bayou Francois and Smith Bayou. What happens when we get a rain, when we get a rain, Bayou Francois backflows, and everything from Bayou Francois over does not drain. Anything that adds water to this watershed, in any kind of rain whatsoever, ten year, twenty-five year, that water backflows and floods the front part of the mere property on Double M Road right here, and backs into my property and across Family Road into this property. We flood, not into the house, not yet, my home has been there forty years, it has never flooded. But with the, uh, development that's come on Boudreaux Road, all it's done is put more stress on this watershed. My, my question to, uh, Derek in Quality Engineering was, what are y'all doing to improve? Are you counting on the parish to improve the flow in Bayou Francois and New River? Because that's not going to happen. I, I don't see it happening.
The, the, the water flows, um...
The water flows from my property, let me put my finger about where my home is.
If you're, if you're looking, I said, no, I see your property, the water flows north across your property?
No, it flows west.
Okay.
It flows.
Cause I'm looking at this map, and I think the top of the by, the top of the picture is north.
Yes, it flows west.
Okay.
And then it flows south into Bayou Francois, and then it picks up New River at the bridge, right here. I'm sorry, I ran out of time. But, uh, uh, Mr. Murphy has offered to come out, I've offered to show it to him, my neighbor behind me, Junior Talion, has lived, he's eighty-two years old, he's been there his whole life, he was born on the property, his son lives in front of me, uh, Kevin Talion, who's been there his whole life, and the mirrors, Double M Road stands for Harold and Leroy Mirror. They, they both passed in the last few years, and, uh, their family and descendants all live on Double M Road, children and grandchildren.
Sean, can, can you address that issue of the, of the drain, flow of drainage, um, off of? So you're, you're north of, uh, you're on the other side of Corner View from?
This development.
From this development?
Yes, I am.
And if, does the water flow, I don't know, does the water flow west off of that property as well?
I don't have that drainage exhibit in front, don't have a drainage exhibit in front of me, but from what I recall on this piece of property, all of the water that flows through this development is right, it's right near this proposed entrance, you'll see it noted on your plat, I believe it says, existing two thirty-six inch RCP pipes. RCP is what it stands, concrete pipes. That's where any off-site water, other than that, um, that they are describing, that's how it would come through this property, and we already have a review comment stating that they need to show that their proposed fill on lots one and two, and the proposed improvements of the pond will not increase, make anything worse upstream from this development. So we have noted that as a requirement in our preliminary plat, and they stated that how they will address that.
All right, so, so basically, just to speak in English?
Yes.
Um, what you're saying is, as a condition of approval, they can't add anything that's going to back up across the street onto any of the property on Double M Road or Easy Street or Mr. Pettit's property?
Yes, you said it much better than I did.
Mr. Prior, may I add one more thing, please?
Yes.
Water already backflows through those two pipes now, we get any rain at all, water comes back through it. So if one drop is added to Bayou Francois or New River, down south of me, it's going to come back, one drop.
I think, I think that's what, uh, if I'm hearing correctly, that's, that, that the condition that, um, the engineering folks have put on it is that we have to make sure that there is no, there's not that one drop, that it is what it is now, and it will be that way, what is, the existence now will be that way after this is developed out.
As I made clear to, uh, Derek, and we talked, had a great talk, is that if you're counting on the parish to improve any downstream flow, it's not going to happen, uh, I don't have that assurance, do, y'all don't have that assurance?
I think you're putting it on the developer, aren't you?
Let me, the drainage ordinance is trying to sum it up, drainage ordinance states, you have to study and document how things are acting now, okay? Then, they cannot make that condition worse than what it is.
So it can't add to, it can't add to that flow, whether it's, uh, at the point of drainage off of the land or even downstream?
Yes, so for, in this scenario, if there was, if there are drainage problems upstream of, um, the road here, Corner View Road, and someone thinks the issue may be the two thirty-six inch pipes, if that was the case, because this development's downstream, they're not in the, you know, in the position where they need to improve driveway, road, I mean, culverts to fix things that's offside of their property, they just have to account for what's going on now and not make it worse than what it is now, that is essentially, you know, what the drainage ordinance states.
Have no net, net impact.
Yes, no net impact to what it is. Okay.
We have water coming over Double M Road with every bit of rain, I'm, I don't know how many hundred year rains we've had in the last year, but it's more than one, we all know this.
It seems like it, there's a lot of rain events.
Double M Road is holding water, Family Road is holding water, Easy Street is underwater, those are the three roads west.
Well, and I think, I think the question that we, we have to answer, and what we have to make sure about is that the water that's being held now is, is what it is, I don't know what we can do to rectify, but if we approve this, we've got to make sure that that water level doesn't increase from what it currently does now.
Because if the wa, what, all the, the mirrors, the Talions, and myself, we've all taken pictures, we've all got water marks of how high the water comes up on our property, we're all built up, none of us have ever flooded, but the water keeps creeping up, especially with the homes they put on Boudreaux Road, which is the next major road down, and I would like to, if you would indulge me, please, traffic is no impact, let me tell y'all something, where Boudreaux hits Corner View, it's not a T, it's more like a V. And if you're trying to make a ru, have you familiar?
I'm familiar with that intersection.
Have you, has anybody checked with the sheriff's department to see how many cars have been clicked by people coming from Gonzalez headed towards Geismar and try to make that left on Boudreaux? Cause people trying to make a left from Boudreaux onto Corner View have to nose out to see. They talked about line of sight in the traffic study, and in the packet, I, I couldn't get the drainage study nor the traffic study, I haven't seen those yet, but I would like to see them, and I will.
I'm sure they're, they're available.
I've got to go down and pay for them, but I will.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Pettit, I mean, I've, I've given you a lot of time here, but...
Thank you, but that's a tough intersection, there's lots of accidents there.
I understand. Is anybody else signed up to speak on this?
Yes. Clarence Bush.
Mr. Bush? Miss Bush, excuse me, Mr. and Mrs. Bush? Huh? Two Bushes. Oh, okay.
Clarence Bush, I'm his niece, Judge Anna Carter, in reference to the gentleman that just left, I'm right across the street from him, so with the water problem, there is a water problem, as also if we get a heavy rain, that's flooding on Boudreaux Road as soon as you cross the bridge, the road is flooded. Uh, the intersection before you get to Boudreaux Road, I'm in that curve, and there have been many, many accidents just in the curve before you even get to Boudreaux Road, I mean, we've gotten people out of the bayou, we've gotten cars out of the bayou, and it's just an ongoing thing for us, and, uh, we really, really, truly don't need any more water pouring on us. Um, it's nothing we can do but just sit there and look at it, you know, the bay, the bayou fills up, and because there's a high hill on the opposite side of the street from me, the water doesn't come over, but it does come on top of the hill, so the water is there, when I leave my house going toward Eminem Road, if we have a heavy rain, it's water across the street, we have to drive through it, so we really don't need the flood of water on us, and I've never had a flood yet, I, I was raised up on that piece of property, we've never had a flood.
Knocking on wood so you don't get flooded, Dan.
I, I appreciate that, so, and this is my uncle, he owns the property, so.
So do you want to say anything?
No, no.
Thank, thank you, thank you both of y'all. Anyone else signed up? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, any comments, um, discussions by the commissioners?
Yes, I have a question, is the proposed pond a detention pond for runoff?
Yes.
And all the sewers and so forth in the development are going to empty into that pond, and that pond's capable of holding any water?
No, sir, what we have, what we basically have on this is basically a dry detention basin. In other words, we're going to, we're going to spread this out, right now it is a, it is a ditch that runs through the property. So in order to make sure about drainage, mitigation and so forth, we've got a dry detention basin. The sewer is actually going to tie across Smith Bayou to Bayou View Estates. Well, we're going to have a pump station, run a force main under Bayou, uh, Smith Bayou into next door, into an existing plant, and that's something that we've been working with the utility department, we want to minimize how many plants we have out there, so this is, this is able to be upgraded for us. Uh, we've talked to the operator, we've talked to the parish and worked that out, so the sewer is actually going to be part of an additional, uh, existing plant.
What I was talking about is stormwater.
Oh, yes, sir, stormwater, like I said, it's going to be a dry detention basin, and it's going to allow two things, one being dry, it's going to allow that water to basically, as it comes across Corner View, open up and go into there, and all of our water is going to go into that, and then we're going to detain it.
And it's capable of holding how much water?
Well, we...
Hundred year storm?
We actually have it designed to detain a twenty-five year storm and hold a hundred year, yes, sir.
I mean, I think the, the, the part of the, the challenge that we face, and, and we've seen this with other subdivisions that have come up, is that the engineering study gets done wrong, and then, lo and behold, the neighbors are flooding where they, they didn't used to be, so, um, I mean, what I would say is that there's, there's obviously flooding, some water detention in that area, that we, I think the developer has to be very cautious to make sure their studies are right, and the development is right, so that this, there's no added to water coming off of this property than it, than it already is, is there. So we don't get a problem down the road where somebody else wants to build, but because this subdivision was wrong, then people are now getting flooded out of their homes, that's what I don't want to see on this, that would be my only concern, is making sure, Mr. Murphy, that, that y'all do what, everything that's, that's said here tonight.
Yes, sir, and that's, and that's why I want to go, go out there and, and meet and be a good neighbor and go look at this area, if there is something that we can do, or, I, I, I feel that this is probably more of a regional type problem, which is something that sounds like, you know, downstream or something in this area, but if there is something like the culverts being clogged up, or if there is something, uh, that we can do, a ditch or something be improved to try to help facilitate the drainage across Corner View, then we want to try to do some of that. Uh, you know, Pettit talked about from Family Road traveling west, and that's kind of, we got a ditch, but he said, then it comes back and, and so forth, so we're going to go out there and look at it with him, but our goal here, of course, is not to, not to, obviously, we're here to make sure that we don't impact the neighbors, we don't impact anyone around us, but if there is a existing regional problem, um, you know, that's pretty limited on, on what we can do if there is major drainage that needs to be fixed in this area, so. But we definitely want to go out there and try to look.
I'm going to own my confusion here, because, uh, uh, I'm not really sure what we're voting on, the, the...
We're not voting on anything, because nobody's moved.
Well, I know, but when, when it, when it does come up, the, I, I didn't know there was an initial approval, this is, uh, so this is only for ten additional lots on something that was previously initially approved?
Correct.
When, when was the initial approval done?
January.
Okay, so, I mean, essentially, we're, the options is, we are, we approve possibly contingent on addressing some of these issues, or deny, and the subdivision goes back as the initial approval went forward with only the fifty-five lots that?
Fifty-six, yes.
Fifty-six?
Should be back here, so we get another bite at the apple.
Wait, what's that?
Except you're back here, so we get another bite at the apple.
For the final plat, yeah.
No, on your preliminary plat.
Oh, yeah, 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 right.
We get, I, I'm just going to show you, you know what I'm going to say.
Don't like hammerheads?
I hate hammerheads. I mean, the fire engines can't get back then they turn on and get back out.
But I mean, basically, it's an up, it's an up or down vote to, for the entire plat?
No, not the entire plat. If we deny what he's proposing, he can go, he goes back and he's got fifty-six slots. But since he's bringing it back to us, we get to look at the whole thing again. He's, he's here, the apple's here. We, we get to bite at the apple, the whole apple.
What is being submitted is a preliminary plat.
That's why, yeah, that's why I'm.
Is if it was never here before.
No, he's got an approval in, in the back pocket for fifty-six slots that looks similar to this because he's, he's managed his, his.
But that's not what's being presented in the packet that we got. That's why I'm, I'm confused because what's being presented is that this is an up or down vote on this entire plat.
The application is correct. He's, he's asking for ten additional lots on a previously approved preliminary plat.
But that's not what it says.
Like, for example, Lakeside.
I know.
Like, right, like, for example, Lakeside Terrace says it's a major subdivision, preliminary plat revision.
Well, I think, I think, I think what maybe Mr. Dumas is saying is that we can vote, we can use the opportunity here to review the entire subdivision. And if we vote to approve it, make it contingent upon something having to do with drainage. It looks like Mr. Dumas would add a contingent on putting in cul-de-sacs on these dead-end streets, I think.
Would you say that?
I don't know that, I'm not reading his mind, but I think that's what he's suggesting to us that is, that's our ability.
But it puts us in the position.
Mr. Booth, do you have something to contribute to this?
I was just going to say, I agree that this is a, as you said, this is a submittal for this project. Disapprove it, it goes back to the other one. But you get a chance to look at this one. If you approve this one, it goes forward as this.
Right, but it puts us in the position, it puts us in the position of having to be able to approve it and something might get done or disapprove it and everything stays the same. So it almost virtually guarantees approval, which is the reason why I have a problem with it. If it's going to be presented to us as.
It doesn't work that way.
Well, apparently it is because that's the way it's written on the, the piece of paper.
Well, yeah, and I, and I, and with all, I mean, you know, the staff maybe could have been a little bit more with the history of the project to tell us more information.
Well, that's what I'm asking, I'm trying to get a clarification on what exactly my vote is going to be for or against.
If I can, can I turn this thing on? I'll show you what actually got approved in, in January if it wasn't in y'all's packet. You can see here, it's basically the same exact layout. This is fifty-six lots. This is what's approved today. We can go build this today. What we've done is, we've basically, the reason for the fifty-six lots at the time was because we removed the drainage servitude and removed some things to get our net developable area, which only allowed us fifty-six lots. And looking at it and evaluating it, basically, we decided to add some amenities such as walking trail along Smith Bayou. And, and we came back and asked for the sixty-six lots because we recaptured that. So the difference between fifty-six and sixty-six really is amenities and for ten more lots. So it's exactly the same street layout, same basic drainage study, same traffic study and all that. So that's, that's, that's why it's back here today. It's basically a new plat with sixty-six lots, but this fifty-six is approved.
But that's not going to change the drainage.
Right.
Well.
It's just the number of lots we've got, so it's the same.
Same thing.
Right, but we, if we approve, and again, I'm just speaking out of school here, but if we approve right now, we could possibly put those contingencies in. That's, that's what I'm asking.
I think, I think that's right, yes, I think.
We would not otherwise have.
This is, this is an opportunity that we normally wouldn't have. The other subdivision, it's already in the books.
Okay.
But then we had discussions of drainage when this subdivision came to us before, didn't we?
Yes.
Were there any contingencies on that? Were there any issues? I don't remember precisely with the drainage study and the traffic impact.
I don't remember, no, sir.
The traffic impact, one of the things, the traffic impact, which is the same comments here, is the site distance. There's some trees that are inside the Corner View right of way that do hinder some site distance that we have to go take down. That was part of the recommendation of the traffic study. We still going to adhere to that. We, we, you know, we have to make sure.
That's on the west side of Boudreaux.
It'd be on the south side, yeah. On the east side, on our side. So it's right next to our driveway where we're attaching to. So it's on the east side of Boudreaux. Because, because of that curve, there's some site distance, but there's a lot of trees right along, right off the edge of the pavement. So we got to take all that down in order to open that up. So those stipulations are still, still existing.
So you can add all the stipulations that we had before.
Previously.
Okay. Any, any further discussion or comments by the commissioners? Any motions?
I'll try it. Well, first of all, Derek.
Yes.
I, I mean, Sterling Oaks Avenue is mighty long, so I, I'll compromise for you. As long as you put a cul-de-sac at twenty-seven, twenty-six, I won't require one at Lot Nine. You can squeeze it in. If I draw it, you can draw it.
Yeah, the biggest concern there is the tree between twenty-eight and twenty-nine is a tree.
You know, I like the tree. I prefer the safety. So you got to move it over, okay?
On that one, okay.
All right, so, so here's my, my motion. I make a motion to approve subject to all prior conditions that were, that were there for the fifty-six lot subdivision, a cul-de-sac at the end of Sterling Oaks Avenue where Lot Twenty-six and Twenty-seven are, and a condition that the drainage study comply with, now that the, that the drainage study verify the engineering requirement to verify that no net change to existing conditions north of Corner View Road are affected by this development. In other words, you got to have zero impact north of Corner View where that thirty, where those two thirty-six inch RCPs are.
That's already required.
Which is what the law is.
Yeah.
I just want to highlight it so that the public is aware of it.
All right, we have a motion and a second? Hearing no second? You're not batting a good average tonight, Mr. Dumas.
No, I guess not.
All right, then we have another motion.
I make a motion that we accept the Grand Oaks major subdivision preliminary plat as stated and with the contingency that the, that is built with the staff review comments and the engineer review comments.
So basically the same thing, taking out the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
We have a motion, a new motion by Mr. Dudley, second? Second by Mr. Christie, all in favor?
I want my cul-de-sac.
I heard one eye, any in opposition? Any opposition? I didn't hear a whole bunch of ayes. Do we need to do a roll call?
I'm not sure what happened there.
All right, we'll, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Christie?
Yes.
Mr. Chasson?
No.
Mr. Foster?
No.
All right, we have a vote three to two in favor, so the ayes have it, the motion passes.
Do you want me to cul-de-sac, Derek?
I'll look, I'll look at it. I'll look at it.
Rather than the cul-de-sac.
You should have seconded the cul-de-sac motion. You said silent. All right, item ten B is a major subdivision preliminary plat revision to Lakeside Terrace, quality engineering, Mr. Murphy.
Okay, guys. Again, Derek Murphy, quality engineering, representing America Homeland and Lakeside Terrace. This preliminary plat was approved in October of 2015. The major change is basically the street connections are basically in the same location. We did lose four lots. We did eliminate a street and get rid of a, a T and put in an L. This is just for some, some lots. So basically what happened is we made some, a lot larger pond in the front, a long forty-two. This was an engineering decision to do this. So we're asking tonight for approval. We basically got approved originally for a hundred and fifty-four lots. Again, it's a hundred and fifty lots. And it's just a little different street, a little different street configuration.
Staff?
Staff recommends to approve.
We'll open a public hearing on this. Has anybody signed up to speak on this issue? Nobody signed up to speak, we'll close the public hearing on this matter. Commissioners, comments, questions, discussion? Or motions?
Move to approve.
All right, we got a motion to approve by Mr. Dumas, the second?
Second.
Second by, I think Mr. Foster beat you to the punch. Second by Mr. Foster, all in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to number eleven on the agenda, and it looks like eleven A, C, and D have been removed from the agenda. Is that correct, staff?
That's correct.
So all we're dealing with is eleven B, a major subdivision final plats regarding Woodland Manor, second filing, quality engineering. Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir. Here representing Woodland Manor, America Homeland for Woodland Manor, second filing. This is a small filing, y'all have already approved the first filing. We have, we had a few punch list items on the final, final inspection. All those punch lists have been done except one, which is a great, a grading and putting hydro mulch around one of the ponds because of the rain we've been having. It's been a little difficult. All of the, I guess, the engineering, the academic portion of it has been turned in, all the testing labs, certifications. All that stuff's been done. So we have tonight before you, all punch list items have been handled with the exception of grading of the pond slope.
Staff?
Yes, sir, I got word, same thing that Derek just stated from DPW, that everything's been done except for that one item.
And as soon as weather permits, we're going to be, it's literally an hour's worth of work. We just can't get out there, we can't get on the slope when it, when it's full of mud.
We'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Anybody signed up to speak? Nobody signed up to speak, so we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, questions, discussion and/or motions? Mr. Christie moves to approve, second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Dudley, all in favor?
Aye.
Agreed?
Any in opposition?
Is that subject to the last punch list item?
Yes, yes, that motion was subject to the last punch list item being corrected. All right, the motion passes with no opposition. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
I want to thank y'all for tonight and thank you for, if y'all need anything, we're always here.
All right, item number twelve on the, on the agenda is the resolution we passed last month to have a public hearing to recommend the approval or denial to the parish council of a resolution to create a transportation master plan. And as I said at the beginning of the meeting, a few weeks ago, Bill Rue, who's the director of Public Works, came before the council for an RFQ for engineering and professional services to do a transportation master plan. And he's, and according to an email that he sent to me on July sixth, that will be advertised in two weeks from today's, or from that day, so two weeks from July sixth. And what, what this, what the plan that was proposed, it says, what Mr. Rue said, he starts from a different approach. They'll be looking at the desire of what the parish to look like within thirty to fifty years from now and design a transportation infrastructure to meet that, the desire. The desire will take into consideration the area of the parish that will and should be the extension of Baton Rouge. Obviously, this is along I-ten. The idea for service road along the full extent of I-ten with access off of I-ten to the service roads with commercial development along the same and then local connectors roads. This will be also conversion of major arterial roads to four lanes and roundabouts, including Highway four thirty-one from Port Vincent to US sixty-one, forty-four South, I-ten to the River Road, Louisiana Highway thirty throughout the parish, Highway forty-four North of six twenty-one and more. He called this a business plan with the idea to do two things. One, have a plan in place that has the force and effect of an ordinance, so it cannot be canned with a new administration and to begin the process of corridor preservation of the right of way and to also put us in line for public funds from the state and federal government and also to the use of user fees, basically to pay for without the idea of any new taxes. So I thought that was a good first start, but Mr. Dumas, I know you and I've had some discussions on this and I'd like to have you make some comments about that.
Well, I, you know, I, we would love to have Bill Rue or, you know, come to us and, and so we can talk about this a little further. I, I was looking at it from a perspective of, of a typical transportation plan that would not only include all of the things that builders including, but also include levels of service for the roads. Identify what are the, what are the permissible levels of service on the road. And by that I mean, how much capacity can, can they, can they support concurrent with, with the development? So that those things, that information and the hierarchy, the, the, the right of ways reservation, all of those things could be incorporated into our ordinance. So when, when traffic studies are done and they come to us, you know, we, we really have a solid basis to evaluate and manage that growth so we can, so we can actually look at it and develop and say, you can develop X number of lots, but, but the rest of it, the road capacity has to be in place concurrently with you building those lots. I was hoping that, that there would be, that we could talk to him to make sure that all of this is included in that RFP and so that when, when it goes through and the master plan is completed, we have all of that additional substance and we go through public hearings because at the end of the day, I think people need to speak up and say, what's the level of service that they want on the roads? At the, you know, at the end of the day, that's an impact on our quality of life and our pocketbook. So, you know, I think the, the public need to be involved in that process somehow.
Certainly. Any other commissioners' comments on, on that notion or on that idea? Do we have anybody signed up to speak on the recommendation of a master plan to the parish council? Well, what I would like to see happen on this is, like you said, we have very limited power and authority on this commission. We have the ability to deny or grant subdivisions. And obviously, one of the things we take into account is, is traffic. And we, we have traffic engineering studies about the impact that they have, about what new developments can have, but it's not set forth in a larger scheme of things, which is what I'd like to see on this. And it's my belief personally that, you know, roadways are something that, that the government should be providing, whether it comes from the state or the federal government or from the local government, using local funds that are already existing. User fees are always, I think, a good thing, you know, from people developing so-called impact fees, which some people would characterize as a tax, but it doesn't go across the board. It goes to those people who are developing the land. And I certainly think that Mr. Rue being here would, would help along with this discussion. One thing that he did mention was that, in his email to me, was it involves many of the public entities we have, from the school system to the sheriff's department. All of those need to be included in this planning phase. And I think this commission needs to be incorporated in this master plan as well simply because we have, for the most part, the final say on the approval or denial of subdivisions, which can directly affect traffic and, and transportation issues. So I would, I would like to see us recommend to the parish council a resolution to move forward with this master plan and, and add to it the, the capacity that Mr. Dumas talked, talked about and all the issues that Mr. Dumas talked about in that master plan and perhaps invite Mr. Rue back next month. I think he was sick today is what he, he told me. Invite him back next month to address this further so we can have a more robust discussion on this issue.
Well, we can also be a non-political body to hold public hearings rather than the parish council. It might be, might take that load off the parish council, you know, as this process goes through.
Certainly. And it's, it's something that is worth discussion and certainly getting a plan in place is absolutely necessary. Mr. Fournier, did you have some comments, sir?
I did. Committee, we, we are going to be working very closely with Mr. Rue because as we all know, traffic impacts land use and land use impacts traffic. And we'll be working with him as closely as possible and as, as we can, we'll be giving you information as, as a planning commission. So we'll keep you closely advised as much as we can.
Very good.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Well, I think you said it best. I, I make a motion that you just described.
That we, that, and then just to reiterate, it would be to recommend that the parish proceed with a transportation master plan and incorporate all of the issues addressed by Mr. Rue, but also the capacity issue.
Right.
And the priority issue.
Right, level service priorities, exactly.
And to, and, and we offer our services as a public body to hold those public hearings on that. That being your motion?
That being my motion.
Do you have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Foster, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any in opposition, hearing none? Staff, can y'all prepare that resolution to send to the council?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we will recommend, yeah, thank you.
I'm not sure which staff to look at, but that's, that's good. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to. All right, moving on to item number 13, staff report?
I don't have a staff report, but I, I do want to speak up because I said I would in reference to what was earlier today with the consent agenda, is that for items that have mortgages, we don't, sometimes we don't require signatures because that information is sent to the financial, the mortgage company automatically. And if we don't hear anything within that timeframe, that's when it's placed on the agenda or taken off the agenda. And this, we haven't heard anything from them, so it stayed on the agenda. So I just said I would state that and speak up for that.
But aren't they supposed to, and maybe I'm just not familiar enough with the process, but it's permissible for the person, for the property owner to submit a request without even signing the affidavit?
I agree with you, yes, sir.
I mean, that's, no, no, that was a question, I mean, is, so are we saying?
I know in the past that we've done it without having a signature, sending it to, to you and also sending it to the mortgage or the finance.
I mean, because it looks like the, the purpose of the, of having them sign the declaration is that if they make a misrepresentation as to who the mortgage holder is, then you've got some sort of bind. And so if we're allowing people to submit these requests without signing the affidavit and they say their mortgage is with Wells Fargo, but it's really with Citibank, you're not making them sign the affidavit, there's no way to hold them accountable and you get nothing back from Citibank because they don't really have them, or Wells Fargo, whoever, because they don't really have a mortgage with, not that I'm accusing anybody of doing that, but.
Right, I understand. I'm just stating that, you know, in the past, that's what I was told, so.